Topic, how can we refine that and really focus in the area of onboarding? So we continue to collect data. So we looked at tons of literature sources. We looked at best practices from other similar colleges. We did focus groups. So I have focus groups, three separate focus groups. One for students, one for faculty, and one for staff. So we can really get that perspective to see where are the gaps currently in online staff, in admissions? Where are the gaps? How can we improve? And what are our successes? What are we doing well? We're doing some wonderful things, but we can really take it to the next level. We also did other surveys and also we looked at some one-on-one interviews with personnel and admissions and student services. But all of these points of data, they've helped us arrive at what will our mission be for QEP? And what will those outcomes be? And we're confident that our mission strongly aligns with MCC's mission and our outcomes strongly align with our strategic plan goals, especially Goal 1 and 2. So our mission, and as you know, Harry Bigfoot is our QEP mascot. I think you got a little bit introduced to Harry. But our mission is to enhance student success by providing a positive and student-centered onboarding experience. So again, redesigning that onboarding experience. Students really do have a seamless front door experience. Remove any barriers that were there so they can go on to, to be very successful. Now I mentioned outcomes and goals. I wanted to share with you our goals and outcomes that will guide us through all of our actions that we're implementing. So the first goal, new students will successfully navigate the enrollment process, pharmacy, and effective communication and success. The first outcome will be increasing the number of prospective students to complete an application and are converted to enrolled status. So students that are prospective students, students who enroll in school. How can we use more effective communication to get them to complete the application? The second outcome, increase that percentage of applicants who convert to enrolled status. So now they've completed an application, now getting them in classes and rolling there. And the third outcome for this goal is that they'll register for classes based on their program choice through a newly designed navigator-led by the model. So we will have a navigator model that I'll talk about here in a moment. Goal two, new students will successfully progress in their academic journey their first semester. So as a part of that refinement and focus, we looked at those critical first two semesters that students have and how can we impact that positively? The first outcome, decrease those students, the number of students that attend before the census day, decrease the number who drop before that census day. Decrease the number of students who drop before the withdrawal day. And again, the census day is that 10% day. It was very early in the course, after six or seven classes, about the first two weeks for some courses, with eight-week courses, it's even sooner. The withdrawal date is a couple months. And then increase the percentage of students who will successfully enroll in second consecutive semester. So those are outcomes. So the way we shape the outcomes, that was from some data that we bought. Now I want to share some of that data with you. So we looked back three years, removing the timeframe of the pandemic. And by the way, we are looking, this is the target population audience for the QEP will be non-high school students. Because high school students enroll, they go through admissions differently than non-high school students. But the great thing about QEP, a lot of the actions that we're putting in place, we will be able to transfer those over to high school students. So every, all students will be happy at some point. But we looked back three years and we looked at, okay, so that's true. How many applications did we receive? How many of those applicants enrolled in classes? And then how many of those withdrew before that census day? How many drew before the withdrawal day? And how many did enroll in second semester? So the numbers in red, those indicate the percentages as soon as that we lost. So if we take a look at one of them, for example, let's look at the last one, 2020 key spread. So last break, we had 589 applications received. Applications to apply to MCC. Of those, 205 actually enrolled in class. We lost 65.2% of that. Now, with that said, of course, there are reasons why students completing the application and not attending MCC that we, we can't affect, you know, we can't help. From 65% loss, we keep a confident that the things we're going to do in QEP can definitely have a positive impact on that error. Yes?
So that's 65% of the 205, 65.589.
589.
Okay.
Yes, yes, 65.2% of the 589. So we lost 65% of what we lost. So the ones that enrolled in times of those, we lost 202, 2025 before the census day, which is very early, which shows us we need to be very early on. And so we lost 2025. Along with remaining, we lost another 20 remaining before the withdrawal day. And then 112 successful people in that semester. So of the remaining, after these are taken out, we still lost 16.6%, the second semester. Now, I assume these numbers sound low, but to paint a picture, put that into perspective, the average number of students who graduate from like our A D N program, our associate community nursing, is five. So even a small number can really have a big impact, even on purpose. But that's some of the data that I want to share with you. Okay, so now, some of the key components that are, you know, really going to make the QEP what it is. And Harry, I don't know if you're familiar with these. All right. So three components I want to share with you. First one is really the heartbeat of this planet. The heartbeat of QEP, success navigators. So what are success navigators? Okay, so success navigators will be the primary point of contact for these new students. Is there one person, their primary contact that they can go to for everything? And these, we're looking at having three, but we grow, you know, and have more down the road. But we're looking at having three who will be the many experts in their program areas. So they will be assigned as a caseload method. They'll have a caseload based by program. So for example, the first navigator, they have the allied health students and those programs that require special entrance guidelines. The second navigator would have CTE program students and some other students. And the third one would have the college transfer along with some student-wide responsibilities. But they will have those areas and a caseload of students that they will help. And we really have a lot of ideas in place. We want them to, they go out and experience what it's like to be a student in those programs, be a student for a week, so they really can relate to these students. But the navigator will be their, their primary point of contact. They will do everything from recruiting students to helping them through the application, helping them request their transcripts, fill out their RBS, their residency determination service forms, interpreting financial aid, and even advising them, which is my next point, the advising shift. So currently, when students enroll, they go through all the various steps, getting the application, all of that on file. And when it's time to advise them for their first semester, they have to make an appointment with faculty member to do that. So best practice has shown us that the more effective way to do the advising is for the advising to take place at student services with the navigator. So for the first 24 to 74 credit hours, the navigator will, they will have to register those students for their classes. So that will be an advising shift. And we have very robust training in place, the QEP, I've already had to nail all of these steps, so we have that ready. Also, the navigators, all three of them, will be housed in a one-stop shop. So the one-stop shop, we're looking at converting their current location, physical location from campus, such as the council and our some other places that we're looking at, to be that one-stop shop. And we like to call it the Legend Center, because as you know, Bigfoot, Harry's considered the legend. And students get onboarded at MCC, they'll be a legend too. But all three will be there. The way I see it is that Legend Center is like a wayfinder hub. That is the place where students go to find their way. So they may have a question about hanging in Blackboard. I can't reset my account. I received something from financial aid, I'm not sure what this means. There's no more going to different places through our contact. It's not the wrong place they want to. And then the navigator, who works collaboratively with admissions and anyone else that's with it. But that will be called on Legend Center. So our tagline is get onboard and be a legend. And in an effort to really create a visual representation for our tagline before the QEP, the development committee decided to really emphasize the get onboard portion of our tagline and make a connection to what you get onboard to. So we brainstormed a couple of different ideas and what they decided to do is to get onboard a frame of a visual representation. So if you think about it, you know, the Aberdeen, Carolina and Western Railway, you know, it's right down the road, you know, with the railway system that comes through Montgomery County and through Troy. We thought that would just be a great visual representation, give a little Gimsy to it. Also, it would provide endless opportunities for effective marketing. We have lots of ideas, like during registration week, the navigators could wear conductor hats, maybe suspenders, something to really give that, you know, promote the visibility of the QEP. And I actually had a meeting with Jeff Daly down at the Row and he's a pretty nice guy. He said, we are welcome to bring Bigfoot down to come down, do pictures, do a video, and explain whatever we want to get some marketing going. So we're really excited about that and adopting the type of thing. But thinking about keeping our fun, Gimsy's visibility to QEP, we want to put them as well. So we have our tagline, MCC Mountains, and of course, Bigfoot down, down the path to MCC. So we are actually going to be putting together some T-shirts very soon. And I would for employees to give out, and I would love for all of you to have T-shirts as well. So I brought a sign-in sheet. If you don't mind, just write down your name and your size preference, and I will make sure you get the T-shirts. And they come in size of anywhere from small to four XL. And also another thing before I end, I can't tell you the overwhelming response that we see students and, and staff about Bigfoot, about Harry being sort of the QEP mascot. So they, they just love it. And actually, some of our carpentry students made as class project, a life-size seven-foot Bigfoot stand that we use for a lot of other pops that students really like. And also, we have a 3D printer on campus and some students were able to download the schematics to make a Bigfoot chair. So I brought one for everyone. So I'll just pass these around, please, if yourself will take one. I wear mine on my landowners or every QEP. But it's been very, very challenging to do it for those. But I know that's a quick, quick snapshot, and that's a QEP, it's hard to get everything in, you know, in a few moments, I get one take up, ten minutes of your time. But I would absolutely love to come back anytime you'll have me to give support. Okay, we have these parts in common.
Great question. Um, great presentation that you gave there on the beginning. Um, that big drop, the big gap between those that complete the application
Yeah.
and go up to enroll into the first class. Are there any follow-ups in regards to after they fill out the application? Because I know sometimes people run into barriers and they're applying to other schools as well, so they're kind of like trying to figure out, like, are this school, are this college? So what are you doing with them from six, 30, 50 enrollment between that phase of time?
Excellent question. Absolutely. So if you think about it, you actually hit on one of the very important aspects of that is timely contact. Because if they're applying with us, they're probably applying to other schools as well. And often, they're applying to other schools. So that timely contact with them and letting them know that somebody is here to help guide you and help you in every step. Also currently, once we receive the application, we send out a welcome letter that has tons of information, all the different programs and the different steps they need to go through. However, to be honest and transparent about this, it's a lot of information. And, you know, I've met numerous times with student services and the dean of student services, and they admit it's just too much. It's about four pages, very small font with lots of information. But one of our actions that we're working on actually, we're completely redesigning that welcome letter. So it's very to the point, they know their navigator, who they contact immediately. And then we have some other actions in place to where, once an application was received, the navigator, whoever it's assigned to, must contact that student within two days. Again, that timely contact and sending them information they actually need. And we received a lot of helpful information from those focus groups, student focus groups, because they let us know, you know, it's too much. We didn't know what to do, but even know who to contact. And they gave us a lot of other suggestions too that we felt like to do. That's one way that we're doing. Also, another way is also the use of QR codes, especially when we're out in the community. Because right now, we don't have a definite tracking system to really track those inquiries. So we're working on that to get more effective timely communication. And there's some other actions too. And again, we're in the development stage, so we're just looking at all the different ways that we can capture those students very, very quickly.
And do we have three already assigned navigators?
The implementation of the QEP cannot take place until approval is received from SACS year. And that will be from their onsite visit, which is in October. So once we have that approvals, when we move forward. Currently, we do have a success coach, and that person is doing the success coaching for the students. Because the navigator will be instrumental in all those onboarding steps, but will also remain as the success coach for those students prior to their fear against the state. So we do have success coaching in place, and then we have different personnel within admissions who are doing the other steps. So the vision is to have three, but we like to reposition two current staff members. The person who will actually do the success coaching now would be one. And then another person moving over from admissions to be the second one, and then potential higher person beginning in, excuse me, January, once approvals received.
You probably already thought this was suggestive.
Yes.
I think navigating is a really good idea, but I also think that's early on, at the application point. Then that student involved with that particular faculty member will fail the program much better than somebody that's not with that program all the time and gives them immediately to talk up to the faculty and themselves.
Oh, absolutely. And we know this, this needs to be a collaborative process. We're not saying that the person always sees the navigator. We are going to do quite a bit of training with the navigators so they truly know the environment. But absolutely, this is going to be a collaborative partnership. So there will be time square, the faculty members will be a valuable resource, and meet with that student.
I think it would be a valuable resource. All of that.
Oh, for sure.
Yeah. That's good.
Any other questions? Okay. Well, I appreciate your time. And again, if there are any other follow-up questions, please just give them to me, I'll be happy to give you any information.
Thank you very much.
Sam, will you start the sheet around so everybody has a chance to sign?
Okay, now we'll continue on with our agenda. And do I hear a motion to approve the March 8, 2023 Board and Committee Meeting Minutes?
To move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We are voting on the motion that the March 8, 2023 Board and Committee Minutes be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If any oppose, motion carries. And now we'll continue on with our standing committee reports, and I'll call on Mrs. Tensley for Budget and Finance.
The Budget and Finance Committee met earlier this evening. Uh, we have two motions to come to this committee. First recommend, is a recommendation to approve the February financial report.
Could you put that in the form of a motion, please?
I move that February, the committee recommends, and I move that February financial report be approved.
Thank you. Coming from committee, the motion requires no second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we're voting on the motion that the February financial report be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
I also come in from the, uh, the Budget and Finance Committee recommends, and I move that the 2023 write-off reports be approved.
Thank you. Coming from committee, that motion requires no second. Is there any discussion on the motion? We're voting on, on the motion that the 2023 write-offs be approved. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
Uh, other items that we reviewed in our meeting were, uh, reports from the foundation financials, uh, which showed about an $80,000 decline in our investment, as has been shown in most people's investments. And, and also, we, we reports, uh, two grants that have been applied for, uh, there being no further business, the meeting was adjourned.
Thank you. Mr. Knowles, Building and Grounds Committee?
Earlier this afternoon, the Buildings and Grounds Committee met. Dr. Bledsoe discussed the Blue Room at Blair Hall and some of the new hand dryers with the HIPAA filters into them. And we also had a couple of action items, one being the sale, shade sales. And the Buildings and Grounds Committee recommends, and I move that this shade sale proposal could be approved.
Thank you. Coming from committee, this requires no second. Is there any discussion on the motion? We're voting on the motion to approve the shade sales proposal. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
We also had a closeout with a previous builder, and the Buildings and Grounds Committee recommends, and I move that the MCC Building 100 interior renovation closeout be approved.
Thank you, Mr. Knowles. Coming from committee, this requires no second. Is there any discussion on the motion? We're voting on the motion that the MCC Building 100 interior renovations closeout be approved. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
We had no, no other new business, and we concluded.
Thank you. Mrs. Eccleston, the Personnel Committee?
Uh, the Personnel Committee met earlier this evening, with 3 present. We had a report, we knocked the bread cell on personnel separations, and then we discussed changes to the organizational chart. Uh, the board member, the motion from committee is that the Personal Committee recommends, the Personnel Committee recommends, and I move that the organizational chart update be approved.
Thank you. Coming from committee, this requires no section, no second. Is there any discussion on the motion? We're voting on the motion to approve the organizational chart update. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries.
The committee joined for Bigfoot.
Thank you.
The curriculum, sorry, student services concluding that earlier. We had a presentation from Dr. Foster regarding student services and curriculum, quite lengthy and a bit detached, and having no new business, we have done.
Thank you. And reporting on the Legislative and Public Relations Committee, we met earlier and we had a legislative update and received a copy of the budget tracking sheet. Institutional Status Committee, again, this is Eccleston.
Uh, the Institutional Status Committee met earlier this evening, with 3 present. We had the first reading on the live project update. It involved procedures with live type projects. No action was taken at this time. I'm sure you did.
Thank you. Call on Ms. Hunsucker, our SGA report.
I'm not going off the script on the thing again. Sorry.
They're loving you.
I've talked a lot, the recent things that we've done, the St. Patrick's Day, the Lucky Leprechaun Jamboree that we did. We had the spin the wheel game, which was very successful. Everybody was trying to get that green and they were struggling to get it. The guessing room we had, there was 170 pieces of candy and somebody, Mason Shaw, he guessed exactly one set of them. Yeah. So he won that. And then the mayor's, um, she was, actually, he was actually four boards for me, the one that was telling me it was your, she won that. She got the point of all your part for that. The food draw went great and they delivered the food to the one of the residents who were shrunken, she went back. And for our spirit day, we had, March 2nd, there were several people decked out in MCC gear, so that was great to see. And the golf tournament, Emily said it went great. Um, our SGA really enjoyed being there, playing, had a great time. And the DiLarsa mix strategy, our SGA helped like check people in, get their passports to them. And we had a little Easter egg hunt, and all four of the golf names were found. Two of them have been brought to give the prize from them. So I guess the other two just won't get their gift. Um, but they, uh, considered that they really enjoyed that and issued to the DiLarsa, they might have something to do the entire election. So, and then some upcoming things, our RFA, we're planning our, planning a Japanese maple tree beside the bill, and we're going to get a bench beside it. And a family member from our SGA is going to, is going to engrave the plaque. And then Marcus Urban is going to help us with the bench. That coin. And then we also voted and approved to spend a hundred dollars today, a brick at the end of the year from the SGA. And then we have end of semester snacks on May 4th and 8th, and that's it for that. But they wanted me to share, I'm going to read it word for word, because this is what they want to do. It's like we have an active, I feel that cheerleaders of SGA should get to be active and to be active at the school and in the community. There have been a lot of great comments about how involved in 2022, the three SGA, the three next year. They were ebb, 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 and free from the ambassador for the SGA to cast your in my word, all in word for shared. I think it gave me elaborating, exciting, spectacular, and leadership. And I, I know that we have a board meeting, but like it's going to be graduation, I call it a deal. But I have extremely enjoyed being on board and thank you for this community.
There's, right.
Going to cry.
If you're crying this month, wait till next month. Okay, I'll call on Dr. Bledsoe for the president's report.
Thank you, Mrs. Bultas. Ladies and gentlemen, item number 15.1 is my report for the month of activities that I've held. Just a couple of highlights from this month. We did present our budget request to the county commissioners on the 14th of March. Received a number of positive comments and are waiting to see the results of that request. Additionally, additionally, we had an employee appreciation luncheon on the 21st of March. That was to thank our employees for all of the hard work that went into our SACS reaffirmation efforts. As you know, we've sent off our reaffirmation report. We're waiting to hear back at the end of this month, and I'm sure we'll have a few more appreciation luncheons, but we had just a nice day where we could have a little bit of pizza and finally relax from, from all that hard work. Other, other items, we did have a visit from a representative from Duke Energy, who's a new representative, trying to learn more about our institution and our needs. And we had some great conversations, one of the highlights of which is he's going to keep his eye out for some charging stations for us. So hopefully, we can add a few of those to campus in case anybody wants to have an electric vehicle. And then, of course, we had a great day at the golf tournament. So where, where the folks in the golf tournament, everybody worked really hard, fine day, and we appreciate all the support we received. And Mrs. Bultas, that's my report for this month.
Thank you very much. Um, going on to my report, um, so a quick report on the NCAA CCT seminar. Seven of us attended, Dr. Bledsoe, Dr. Bennett, myself, Susan Eccleston, Bill Price, Tim McColly, and Carrie Hensley. Um, we had a great time visiting our, it was kind of hectic, to tell you the truth, because we ran around and visited three of our legislators, and that was very interesting. We met Dave Craven.
Yeah, that's right.
Yes. Who is our new senator, and he is very enthusiastic, and we really appreciated speaking with him. And I know that Dr. Bledsoe is following up with some information about our, our college in particular. Um, we also received, it was legislative day for the community colleges as well as our seminar, and we did receive some really interesting literature about the legislative And we did receive some really interesting literature about the legislative agenda and some statistics. And if anybody would like a copy of these, I certainly will get you a copy. Just talk to Dr. Bledsoe or me and we'll get you, because it's some really good information in here. Um I don't know if anybody else that attended this, usually I, we all did um our ethics training again. And usually I come back with something um that I learned. And I did learn something, but it's not exactly about ethics. I learned that all of you get this um lobbying um information. I did not realize that all of you get that. I thought it was given just to me as board chair. So that was that was something that I learned that I didn't know. Nine years I've been board chair and I I didn't realize that all of you get that. So you're getting that because you are somebody who um is under the ethics of the state is regards lobbying. And you learn all about that in ethics every time you go. So I did learn that. I don't know if anybody else who attended has anything to say. We had a good time, you know, good fellowship um among ourselves and also with other attendees. So it was.
I I thought it was really interesting because we actually got to go in and visit all three of our representatives. And one of them had a real tie to MCC through the the where they do the animals.
The taxidermy program, yeah.
They threw it and and it was just wonderful and and he just hopped right into the conversation.
So I really encourage you, if you can find the time to go, I know Mr. McCauley uh couldn't stay there the whole time, but he was there most of the time. So even if you can't make the whole meeting, you can go for one day. Um I would really encourage you to attend because you you get a picture of all of our, the fifty-eight colleges together um doing the same work, all for our students. So it's a good time to go and it's 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 good to fellowship.
When is the next and where is it?
Oh, I'll get you, I'll get you that reason um at the next meeting. We'll put it on the calendar. Thanks. I don't know, probably it will be Wilmington.
They flip it back and forth.
Oh, we can take you out.
How about we take?
Yeah, we'll invite you to supper, but, okay, make sure we have your contact information. You've decided to go to Wilmington? Oh, good, okay. All right, um.
About the um NCA CCT um legislating seminar. They give you some great update information about current events, how it relates to the community college. I was really amazed how they even tied, even the reason why so many people are out of work. And they gave like, um how you like the reasons and how it relates to the college. So and not only just talks about, you know, all the, you know, but also the relation to your society in itself. And it's really like a beneficial stuff. People say things on TV all the time, like how much of it is that? But when it comes from the state legislated, you know, coming first, turning down the challenge and really information that is really um knowledgeable and truthful and factual. So I really enjoyed this current events and the relation to the community college. I enjoyed visiting this community um seminar. It was awesome, especially being by the side of my president.
I have to tell you that Dr. Bennett did try out a senate seat. Okay, uh so again, I encourage you if you can ever make it to one of the seminars, they're well worth it. Um next on my report, we do have to do, I know, another evaluation. We are required every two years to do a board self-evaluation and we have forms here for that. And we have envelopes. If you want to fill out the form and mail it in, you can. We'll also be providing a link if you want to fill it out online. So you can do either one, whichever one you want to do, um is up to you. But it has to be done before the May meeting. So you have a month, not quite a month, but please get them in on time because we do have to tally those and then uh go over them at the June meeting. So um you can pick those up after the meeting. And now, um in pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one four three dash three one four point one one A one. Prevent the disclosure of information that is confidential or privileged pursuant to North Carolina General Statute one fifty-one, one one fifteen D dash twenty-seven. I will um entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of the presidential evaluation.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Is there any discussion on the motion? Voting on the motion to go into closed session for the purpose of the presidential evaluation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. So now I will excuse from um the meeting all those who are not board members. No, I think she should go.
Ladies and gentlemen, online, uh I will be closing out the connection while we go into closed session. I will reopen it when we go in, go out of closed session. So uh I will, at this time, I will exit us out. And just double check and see if there are any messages. Are there any questions? Okay.
Does he want to come back on?
Yeah. I I'll let everybody know that we we will come back on.
I would say fifteen to twenty minutes.
All right. Hold on, uh Dr. Dunlap, I will exit now. Uh I might can turn that screen off, yes, sir.
I know, but we can't, we can't do a closed session over.
Over. Yep.